Everybody? Welcome, everyone, to our October public meeting of the Borough Council of Morrisville. Thank you all for coming. We will, I guess, before we get started, I'll report that we had an executive session tonight in which we reviewed certain personnel, real estate, and litigation matters. And with that, we will lead the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That's okay. Yes, I'll repeat again, if anybody wants to make a public comment, please sign the sheet. I already picked up a couple of them, and I'll come down and pick up the final one in a few minutes. So first, I'll ask Virginia to take a roll call for attendance.
Yes. Mayor Anderson?
He's not present, Virginia.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Catherine Frey-Dengelhorn?
I'm present.
Helen Laugn?
Here.
Andrew Lupin?
Here.
Jason Minett?
President Viadun, our phone call.
Bob Paul?
Here.
Scott Robinson?
Yes.
Nancy Sherlock?
Here.
Our borough solicitor?
Scott Holbert, on behalf of Legar and Associates.
Thank you, Scott. And our borough manager?
Present.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you, Virginia. We'll move on to the announcements and presentations portion of the agenda. I'm going to flip the two matters at the request of some members of council, and we'll start with item 3B, which is the TMA Bucks and the TMA Bucks Foundation presentation by Stephen Knoll, the Executive Director. Stephen?
Thank you. As I said, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Knoll. I'm the Executive Director of TMA Bucks. TMA Bucks is a private, nonprofit, non-governmental, and nonpartisan membership association to a service area that includes all of Bucks County. Excuse me. TMA functions very much like a Chamber of Commerce. The difference is that where a Chamber of Commerce focuses on business and the community from a global perspective, the TMA focuses strictly on transportation-related issues and their impact on communities, businesses, and the people who work and live in them. So what exactly does the TMA do? The TMA works with its members to address matters relating to transportation. This could be something as simple as making a call to the right person at PennDOT with concerns on a traffic signal timing issue, or as complex as spearheading an effort to study restoring rail service on a dormant length of rail as we did several years ago in Upper Bucks County. We work in communities to promote mobility alternatives such as carpooling, public transportation used to residents and businesses alike. During the shutdowns of the COVID-19 pandemic, we produced a how-to guide that helped unsuspecting businesses navigate the sudden switch to working from home. There's also safety. TMA Bucks manages and operates Bucks County's Community Traffic Safety Program under a contract with the county of Bucks. We're available to conduct a wide range of educational presentations and community service events such as car seat safety checks, biking and pedestrian safety events, and a wide variety of informational sessions for senior citizens. This entire program is undertaken in the name of preventing traffic fatalities across Bucks County. We are Bucks County's air quality partnership contractor, working with our partners year round, but especially in the warmer summer months, to bring awareness to the hidden dangers of poor air quality, especially for the elderly, the infirm, and the very young. We're also the borough's direct line to PennDOT and SEPTA when issues require the intervention of these agencies. So how is the membership used? Morrisville Borough has been a member of TMA Bucks for well over a decade. Every dollar invested in your annual membership is leveraged at least $4 in federal funding that's being put to work each day, right here in Bucks County, on programs and projects like the ones I've just mentioned. As a nonprofit organization, we rely on our members, 17 of whom are Bucks County municipalities, to provide the grant matching funds necessary to make our work a reality. So what does your membership get you? I'd ask you to please have a look at the informational flyer that I believe was sent to you in advance of this meeting. In addition to helping make our programming a reality, your annual membership entitles the borough and its representatives to a variety of perks such as weekly email newsletters with the latest transportation-related information, public transportation information sessions for the community, onsite registration for new and renewal of current SEPTA senior free fare key cards, discounts on our periodic breakfast and lunch and networking events featuring a wide variety of elected and appointed officials, other experts as keynote speakers, and preferred access to our highway safety program, just to name a few. In recent years, Morrisville has taken advantage of its membership by having the TMA conduct traffic counts and observations at a local elementary school, and there's currently active conversation underway regarding the possibility of a pop-up demonstration bike lane in the borough to demonstrate the benefits of bicycle infrastructure for green and safe travel. I appeared before this council in the past to discuss opportunities for establishing a public charging infrastructure for electric vehicles in the borough. We applied, albeit unsuccessfully, for an AARP grant that would have funded improvements to pedestrian facilities in the borough for the benefit of the whole community, especially its senior citizens. We've been pleased to see Morrisville represented in the past at our presentation and networking events, and we look forward to seeing you continue to join us. Furthermore, we'd like to partner with your police department to realize further success in our Community Traffic Safety Program efforts. It's my sincere hope that the borough will continue to partner with TMA Bucks as a member and, in doing so, make the most of its membership. The easiest way to do that is to contact us wherever there's a transportation concern or issue and make sure that you're at the table. Call us with your transportation questions and concerns, and let us make your transportation issues our transportation issues so that your staff can focus on running the borough. And with that, if you're willing, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from council?
I had gone to a meet, well, Nancy and I had gone to a meeting last spring, was it, about doing a pop-up bike lane, and I kind of wanted to do one early this year, but it looks like if, it'll probably be next year when I'll propose it, but I thought it would be a great example of what bike lanes can do for a community. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Mr. Knoll. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next presentation relates to the Human Services Co-Responder Initiative in Lower Makefield, Morrisville, and Yardley. So please introduce yourselves and tell us all about the co-responder program.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Diane Marsaglia. I'm one of the commissioners in Bucks County, and I am here with our Director of Community Engagement, Yvonne Kavalski. Did you say it right? Kavalski. I keep saying her name wrong, and I apologize for that. So I just wanted to talk for a few minutes before Yvonne kind of tells you everything about the program. So we started a co respond program in the county, I guess it was back in 2020, in Ben Salem. And although Yvonne will tell you more, the idea is that social workers are embedded into police departments. And what I want you to understand that's so important about this is that it allows your police officers to get back on the streets. That's the key to this. The social workers are able to deal with mental health issues and all the problems that police officers right now are being asked to handle that really they shouldn't be. So we're very excited to be able to bring this to Morrisville. I have to say that I have been working, I worked with Chief McClay last year on trying to get you a couple of police cars, and I was thrilled to be able to work with him on this, and he and Chief Kalusi and Chief Kelly were very quick to be able to say they were interested. This'll be, I think, our, if you all join, it'll be 21 police departments that are now engaged with Bucks County in the co-responder program. So I'm going to introduce Yvonne, but I did want to give you a quick update. We are working with your community on summer seats. There's a few members that we're working with on that. We are also getting ready to be able to pave and fix the problems down at the senior center, where there's a grant that we have that will take care of that. We are also very excited that in a few months from now, we will be able to work with you to get something happening at the Stockton Building. It's all in place, it's just a matter of all the details, and we will keep working with your Economic Development Committee on that. So I'm pleased that we're all working together so much. Morrisville has been an important place to my heart. My church is here, my groomer's here, I have a lot of memories here, and I want to take good care of it. So without further ado, I'll introduce Yvonne and then Chief McClay to let you know what some of the chiefs have said to him. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvonne Kavalski. I'm the Community Engagement Officer here at the county of Bucks, and I am here in hopes that you would consider a partnership between the county, the co-responder program, and Morrisville Police Department. And so, as Commissioner Marsaglia had said, it's a partnership that pairs social workers and clinicians, co-responders, with police officers to divert people away from the criminal justice system. And talks started in 2019 between the commissioners, the DA's office, and the different human services departments in the county, and Holy Family University, Lenape, Nova. And so they all decided that it would be a great idea, and the Ben Salem Police Department stepped up and said that they would start with the pilot there in November of 2020. And so the overarching goals of this program is to decrease the time that law enforcement spends responding to situations involving social service needs such as mental health needs, drug concerns, or homelessness, and hoarding, anything that an individual may need, that's what the co-responders can help with. They also provide a more effective emergency response, such as deescalations, and also connecting to services in a more timely manner, and also diverting, the most important thing is diverting them from further penetration to the criminal justice system. So after the Ben Salem pilot showed impressive results, in December 2020, we expanded to Falls and Middletown. And then we decided to expand into Bristol Township, Bristol Borough, and Tolentown. And earlier this year, the Upper Bucks team hit the ground running with the police departments of Quakertown, Bedminster, Dublin Borough, Penrich Regional, Percasie, Richland Township, Springfield, Hilltown, and Tinicum. And then earlier this summer, Warrington, Warwick, and Warminster PDs launched their programs with one of our co-responders, Katrina Matioli. So I want to tell you a little bit about what the co-responders do. So they respond to 911 calls and follow-up calls involving individuals that are suffering with mental health issues, behavioral health issues, drug concerns, as I said earlier, in every areas of the population, including children, teens, adults, and older adults. And the police usually arrive to the scene first, and once the scene and the situation is deemed safe, that's when the officers call the co-responder for their help. And according to our evaluator, Pat Griffin from Holy Family University, the co-responder program has been successful in diverting individuals from further entering the criminal justice system and getting their social service needs met. And so since the end of 2020, the program has served almost 1,400 clients. And so if you have any questions, please let me know. I hope you consider this partnership, as I really think it's important to the community.
Just wanted to be a little more specific, too, about the partnership part. So if you haven't heard this, the way this will work is the county will hire these co-responders with the chiefs of police, but they are county employees, they will stay county employees, county health insurance, all of that. We will pay for the full process for the first two years. After that, the three townships would share the cost and reimburse the county of that employees, divided, prorated, by the way, by the population. Having said that, we are doing everything we can to make sure that we can find grants to supplement that or to take over it. We don't intend to let this go away because the township's struggling financially, but we are also finding that by sharing that way, we've been able to be successful. You don't have to have your own. You can share with other townships, and that spreads out the cost.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Paul, I've got a question, if you don't mind.
Please go ahead.
Diane, good to see you. Thank you for coming down. Yvonne, good to meet you, and thank you for the presentation. I've heard the program, and Chief McClay, thank you for bringing this to everybody's attention. I've heard about the program and how successful it is in Ben Salem, and I'm very interested in getting involved in Morrisville. My concern isn't the program, it's our partners. I'm on the, yes, the county's going to pay the first two years, but then we get roughly a third of the bill after that. My concern is our partners. I'm on the board of the Morrisville Municipal Authority, and for the past several years, they've owed us $2 million plus, resulting in a lawsuit. I would like to ask for a continuance, we can do some, so we can chat with Lower Makefield and Yardley about what's going to happen after two years, because, again, they've owed the, Lower Makefield owes the MMA $2 million plus as a lawsuit. They're not necessarily a reliable partner, and that concerns me.
I mean, I'm not duly aware to speak on that, but I can tell you that, first of all, it wouldn't be one-third, one-third, one-third. It's divided by population, so Lower Makefield actually would be.
Well, we handle their sewage, and they refuse to pay anything, so that's, and I'm not trying to litigate right now, but as a, Lower Makefield as a partner from Morrisville has not been, has not been good for Morrisville or the borough.
So the partnership would be with us, though. Each, there's a memorandum of understanding that you would agree to, and then Lower Makefield would have their own, and Yardley would have their own. The idea is that there'd just be, you would just be able to share.
Okay. Because we've seen none of that yet, all we've seen as we walked in was this, which is great, but we're the ones who had to go for the, okay, if it's the first step, that's different.
We don't want to get into this without making sure that the council understands, and you have your questions answered.
Great. Thank you very much. That's very helpful. Appreciate that.
I have a question. Do we have any kind of stats? I know I read in the delivery that we received, you know, there are certain things you do, certain things you don't. So when our officers go out and there's somebody that we would need, do we have current stats of how many calls our officers have that would apply to having a social person?
So it just depends on the police department, but it's so many of the calls are mental health needs and drug-related issues that the co-responders are needed, and they do help the police officers. Sometimes they can be, they can be supporting someone for five hours, right? And the police officers can go back and do what they need to do, and the co-responders continue to help them, continue to help the individuals as the day goes on.
So will the, will the.
I was asking for the 911, like, statistics, like, how many calls you've had this year that would apply to this.
Yeah, because we would have to reassess this in two years to see if this is a program that would work for us. So do we have a starting baseline that we would be able then to say, okay, you know, this has helped us 20%, you know, 50%, whatever the stats come out to be?
Yes. I don't have it now, but I, we can.
Okay.
It's not a problem, and that is actually what I think Patty uses to measure over the years so that you can see if it's working or not.
Okay. And you said that, like, if the social worker is out there for five hours, does an officer have to be with that social worker for five hours? No? Okay. Right? It frees up our officers. Yeah, that's great. And then if we had the partnership with Yardley and Lower Makefield, and one of them decided not to be part of this, does Morrisville incur the whole cost, or you would still prorate it and kind of have it with the other communities?
So if that were to happen, we would work to find another police department to join.
Okay. Okay, great. That's it.
I have a question. What's the, what's the average response time for the social worker to show up? Let's say somebody's, there's an overdose on Washington Street. The squad will respond, the police will respond, they'll load them up in the back of the ambulance and probably take them to Frankfurt, Bucks. Like, if the social worker's not on Washington Street, are they, like, following the ambulance? Or are they, they'll meet them at the hospital, like?
So if it's, if it's an overdose, the co-responder will not respond to an overdose, but they will follow up if everything's okay after the hospital, after the individual leaves the hospital, and they will offer their services.
The number you gave, 1,400 people as of 2020?
December 2020.
How about 2021 and 2022? Do we have numbers for that or not?
Well, it's all together, so if. The 1,400 is three years, right? Yes. But remember, it's grown, so we only had Ben Salem in 2020, then a couple more, so it's been adding, but total of 1,400. Some of those people, you need to remember, though, the co-responders have had to go back many times. You may hear from your police officers that they have to go to some homes or something several times. That would be now the co-responder that might go back several times, even though it's 1,400 people, maybe more than one.
How does that work?
1,400 individuals.
Yeah, but how does that work? So let's say you're coming to my house, and then the office, and then you get another call to come to my house. Does the officer call you to say, like, we're not coming, and the social worker should come, or how is it working?
They have done that. So sometimes the officer will tell you that a co-responder can come and support you, and then the co-responder comes, and the police officer goes ahead and leaves.
Okay, so our officers will always respond?
Yes.
Okay.
Officers will always respond. I think there's been cases, though, tell me where our co-responders have made a relationship from that first event and have gone back a couple times to that house without the police officers to continue to support a family or some situation. So the co-responders can stay with a case, you know, a week, two weeks, three weeks, three months, a year sometimes, and we will not close a case until we're sure that the needs are met of that individual. So the individual and the co-responder come up with a goal of what they're working on together, and as soon as that goal is met, then they can close the case. So that could take, you know, three months, up to a year. So we will never close a case unless the goal has been met.
So will the county dispatch the social worker, or our officers actually have to call and ask for it?
The officers ask.
Okay, so there'll have to be some training with our officers so they understand. Okay.
Downcutting out, because we've practiced.
Yeah, right?
Are the co-responders, are they, are they uniformed, or they were just in clothes? And all the, a county vehicle, or, like, they show up, like, are they automatically, like, are they going to be easily identifiable as a social worker?
No, unless they're wearing their bulletproof vest that says, so that's.
Do they have one? Oh, okay.
And they have radios.
And are they located in Doylestown?
No, they are located, they're going to be located in, I think, Lower Makefield.
Okay.
But, you know, I think there's been some towns where we've had it all, like, they had chairs, so that they could, you know, stop in the office and then. Yes. And they rotate, they rotate. They'll rotate between the three police departments, but they'll have their desk at one of the police departments.
Okay. That's interesting. Yeah, no, that's great.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. I also wanted to add my thanks to Commissioner Marsaglia for all the support that she's given to Morrisville, both financial and moral, over the last few years. We really appreciate it.
I'm going to keep doing that, too.
Thanks, we need it. Keep it coming. Before we wrap up, for the last announcement, I want to share an email that I received from Mayor Bud Anderson yesterday around noon time. He said, "Due to several extremely unfortunate circumstances, both personal and professional, is with a heavy heart, I must inform you, as of Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, at 11:59 PM, I will resign my position as mayor of Morrisville Borough." I just want to thank Mayor Anderson for his service over the past two years, and you'll hear more a little bit later in the meeting as to what happens next, but we're going to ask anyone who's interested in filling that slot to give us a letter of interest between now and November 10th, and at the next public meeting, November 21st, council will nominate and elect a new mayor. So as I said, we'll talk a little bit more about that later, but I thought that's important everybody understand where we, that we have this vacancy now. In any case, we'll move on now to the public comments section. I'll call your name. Please come up when I call your name. Everyone has, each person has three minutes to speak. I'll be timing you and give you a signal when you hit your three minutes, and I'm also going to come down to the table to pick up, oh, I'm sorry. That's my borough solicitor for me, and we'll start with Peggy Walsh.
I'm here as a 40-year taxpaying resident of Morrisville who has watched with some horror some members on this current council engaging in unprofessional behavior, childish outbursts, personal attacks, and more importantly, demonstrated a total lack of concern about making our borough a place where young families want to live and raise their children. It seems to me that rather than working for the good of the borough, many of you are more interested in petty grievances, circulating vicious lies, and self-promotion. My case in point tonight is the amount of money you are spending on frivolous lawsuits targeting our police chief. When Chief McClay came here 10 years ago, he had 11 full-time police officers and seven part-time officers. The department was in total disarray. In fact, the Morrisville Police Department was the topic of several articles in the local paper. During his tenure, Chief McClay has created a professional and responsive department in spite of the fact that he's now down to eight full-time officers and four part-time. Keeping in mind that we need two officers on duty 24 hours a day, that is a skeleton force, and yet the chief has managed to juggle his staff to meet the needs of our borough. In addition, he has ensured that all of his officers received rapid response training, and he himself has the rapid response team for the council. The chief also procured three new police cars at no expense to the borough. We just heard Diane Marsaglia say that she got us two through Chief McClay. He often cruises the borough on his bike, and is especially visible during Halloween trick-or-treating, which I really appreciate. And what thanks of cooperation does he receive? It seems to me nothing but criticism and harassment from lawyers brought in by the borough costing the taxpayers, I don't know how much money. He has to waste his own time and money getting his own lawyer to answer frivolous complaints, which could be settled in common sense discussions, because this council and its borough manager feel they have to micromanage the police department. So our taxes are raised while the council continues to pay for the borough manager's hotel room, provides a $200 a month transportation stipend, plus additional money for her tolls. That's quite a job. I wish I had had one like that. You passed a budget which totally gutted the children's library program, $3,000, that's all it was, and cut a Lifeberry staff position without seeking any input from the library staff. I want to thank those of you who have actually produced what I feel is something positive for the community by organizing several festivals in the park this summer, which my grandchildren and I attended and really enjoyed. Many of you I did not see ever volunteering your time or attending these festivals, which help promote family-centered events in Morrisville. I ask you to stop wasting taxpayer dollars on needless lawsuits. Try being more collaborative, supportive, and transparent as you work through budget issues and disagreements. Stop encouraging the rumor mill in this town, or actually starting the rumors yourselves. Morrisville has many strengths, but if you're caught up in infighting, power struggles, and ego stroking, you will not be fulfilling your duty as council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Annie Millionis?
Annie Millionis, 142 West Hendrickson Avenue. I'm here as the Burrow Town, Morrisville Burrow Town Leader, and I'm here to speak about the proposal for the Lights Out in Morrisville. Couple things I just want to fill you in on, and that is that we are part, in Morrisville, we are part of the Atlantic Flyway, which is one of the four major migratory flyways in the United States. It happens to be the most densely populated, with one-third of the United States' population being in the Atlantic Flyway. So there is a great deal of light pollution in this part of the migratory path. It's also one of the areas that is richest in the ecosystems, and the Delaware River and the Delaware Bay play a critical role in the migratory paths for a number of migratory species of birds and insects, including the monarch butterfly. Birds use a combination of several natural phenomenon, including three main ones, in order to migrate. The position of the sun in the sky, the earth's electromagnetic field, and the night sky star positions to navigate at night over pathways that have been used for over scientific star positions to navigate at night over pathways that have been used for over, scientists believe, over several hundred thousand years. Once they are caught in bright light, they are attracted to bright light. So in areas where there's a lot of light pollution, such as Morrisville, which is adjacent to the city of Trenton, they get caught and drawn into the bright light, and they become confused, they become disoriented, and they expend critical energy trying to navigate through buildings and through light that they are not used to seeing. They cannot see the stars to navigate by when there's a great deal of light pollution. Birds bulk up on their specific food requirements before migration, and once they get caught in these confusing, disorienting areas of bright light, they expend critical amounts of energy in trying to get out of that area. And they crash into buildings. They become so disoriented, they crash into buildings and often die. They'll crash into windows, particularly ones with lit, with lights on inside. So as you may have heard in the news just recently, about a week ago, a building in Chicago, McCormick Place, over 1,000 birds were killed in one night because of the lights of that building and the glass on that building. And most of those birds were first-year migrants. They had just fledged this summer and were making their first migration south, and over 1,000 of them were killed instantaneously. Birds littered the ground around the building. And that happens not just in Chicago, but it happens in Philadelphia in our area, in New York, in all of our major cities in the Atlantic Flyway. But it also happens in towns like ours. This town being so adjacent to the Delaware River has a number of migrant species coming through it. Just this past week, a greater yellow legs, which is a shorebird, a rather large shorebird, was spotted in a neighborhood right in the second board. A number of species, over 200, come through Morrisville. So this proposal, and I want to thank Nancy Sherlock for proposing it, is very important to our birds. And as a bird town, this is something that most bird towns within the state of Pennsylvania are looking to do and pass. And it's a voluntary thing that we're asking, which is that homeowners and businesses turn off non-essential lights during the periods of spring and fall migration. So I just want to encourage you, please, to take this, this information into consideration and to pass this proclamation. I think it's a very important one. You will see that there are a number of other cities and towns in Pennsylvania that are doing this. And we can also add Morrisville, hopefully, to the list of, on the we can serve portion of the program in the state of Pennsylvania as a town that participates in a lights-out program. So thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to answer, and I am the lead for Morrisville Birdtown.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul, may I?
Well, that's already been six minutes, so we should move on.
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to say thank you. If you were the person that cleared the signs, we have, we have Birdtown signs, and the one on Delmore Avenue was full of vines and someone cleared it. I didn't know if it was you.
It was not. I put them up, a good number of them up, but I did not clear that one.
Okay, well, whoever did, thank them.
Thank you. Rob Volper?
Hi, guys. This is my first time here, so.
Welcome.
Thanks. Just a couple of things. Our bridge at the canal, I'm sure people have asked about it. I'm sorry, the bridge by the canal. I'm sure people have asked about it. I called the township and they said it's a state bridge, but it's in our town. And for six years, it's been, you know, caution tape and cone. I'm sure if it was in New Hope or Yardley or Newtown, that wouldn't look like that.
Which bridge?
The bridge, the bridge. It's, it's nothing but rust and the sidewalk you can't walk on. And I understand, like, you know, I, I do maintenance of Yardley Commons, and I deal with boards and everything. It's not that easy. It's really not that easy. And it's when it starts that small to try to get something done. But if it's a state that isn't responsible for it, we, we can kind of be a squeaky wheel and say, you want to get down here and fix this bridge? I mean, they're doing some work down at the bridge on Bridge Street, making walkways and stuff for people to go to a brewery, right? Isn't that what they're doing down there? They're doing some kind of construction. Does anybody know what they're doing?
No.
Canal path, all right, well, that's good, but we have a bridge that's going to fall down one day. That was one thing. And the other thing is, I really don't want any more smoking places in my town. Who's doing the zoning and who's approving all of it? They just did another one at Bridge Street. We have, I think it's 25 to 30 smoking places. Are we not sick of all these smoking places? It's either a nail salon or a smoking place. How about get some restaurants and some, you know, commerce that's going to like bring something? I realize that taxes are a nice collection for that, but 25 to 30 smoking places is getting ridiculous. I'm embarrassed of my town. I've been here for 19 years. And another thing I'm seeing, I'm, I'm watching things that I've never seen. I sit on my porch, I live on Pennsylvania Avenue, I love the street. I think that should be Main Street, but it's not. I sit on the porch at nighttime, and I'm seeing things happening that in the last two years, someone threw a rock into someone's house and ran to the car and took off. You know, if I called 911, I couldn't even tell them what the, the number of the car was. People are walking at night that don't belong in the town. People have music blasting at 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night. All of a sudden, there's these houses that had went up for sale, and I don't think owners are having, I think renters have taken them. And I'm just curious if that's like subsidized renting. We do have, you know, sections for, you know, what is it called? Section eight? I mean, I know we have more of it than Yardley does, and we share the same zip code. But how much more, I mean, like, what's going, can we find out if, if someone's getting subsidized with the township? Know if they're getting subsidized rent from the renters? I mean, there was a house that had three families in it within a year, three different families, just three houses down from me. You know, everyone owned their house where I live. And now every house that has gone up for sale is going to rent. That's the companies buying up houses, and there're going to be rentals. So I just wanted to express this because, you know, if I called the township, I mean, they, you know, there's a board meeting, you can go there. So I asked tonight, when is it? She says it's tonight. I said, well, I'll be there. It's my first one, and, you know, I'm glad to be here. So I just wanted to express that to you guys, and maybe, maybe we can do something at least about the bridge, you know?
I couldn't agree more about the bridge, but we're, we're extremely frustrated.
Yeah, and the smoking places. I mean, I mean, what?
Ridiculous.
Is there something we can do as, as a community? To the state? If we wrote letters or? I mean, this is, they should be ashamed because this is, you know, they restored the path for what, how long? Like 60 miles of it? And, you know, we don't look that great over here. And even, even our, our lights at the street, the corner, the buckets are crooked, they're not painted. I mean, I was ready to get out there and straighten the bucket and paint it, seriously. I mean, it's Bridge Street, but it's still Morrisville. It's our town, you know? So thank you.
Thank you. Bert Mutt?
How you doing? I'm just here to speak for George McClay, the chief. My understanding is the council wants to get rid of him. And I got to ask, are we better off with him or without him? So my understanding, every time with George, I have business, we've had numerous problems in the borough. I don't know if council knows, the laundromat, parties, drugs, alcohol, motorcycles, call doors, he responded. We have him on Chambers Street, they had drug raids there, called, in response, in professional and efficient manner. Have people, homeless people sleeping in cars. I don't know if all you guys noticed, more than numerous people sleeping in cars. I call him, he takes care of the problem. So I got to look at it, you know, if he responds to what the residents need, then I believe he's a good chief, and we can keep him. So I think council needs to work with him and give him what he needs. We need more people. Do everybody know that there's people sleeping in cars and drugs down there? I don't know. You guys know that? What knows? Okay, well, you guys should be aware of it in your town, in your public parking, behind Bridge Street, you know, they're there, you know? I call him, in response. I think he does a good job at it. So I think you should be commended for it, not plunged. So if you are trying to get rid of him, I think about it hard. Does a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Reichert?
Hello, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeffrey Frick, and this is Michelle Reichert. We are here representing Toll Brothers and want to address a growing safety concern we have at the intersection of Pennsylvania Avenue and Green Street. This is a very busy intersection with businesses on all four corners and the, and the rail line maintained by Amtrak. Over the last 18 months, we have seen an alarming amount of near miss accidents for both motorists and pedestrians, with many of those pedestrians being children walking to and from school. Michelle has been going back and forth between Morrisville and PennDOT in regards to making this intersection safer with maybe something like a do not block intersection paint pattern and a painted walkway for the children. You know, there's been some dispute over who is actually in charge of this road. Michelle here has good documentation from PennDOT stating that this is not a Pennsylvania state problem, that is a local problem. So, you know, we have, we have that documentation confirming it. She can show it to you if you like, or we can provide it to you another time. You know, we just want to make it a little bit safer. We're right there. We see this happen all the time, you know, with Route One right there and the four businesses and the gas station's a very busy place. We just want to see if we can make it a little safer. You know, if it's a matter of resources, we are willing to discuss with the township and whether the Toll Brothers can help make this happen a little faster. That's all I really have. Want to add anything?
Hi, it's my first time here. So yeah, I've been working on this since April 28th of last year. Spoke to John Leader, he, I think he's the superintendent, he told me to reach out to PennDOT in regards to this problem that we're having. And it is a huge problem. It's every single morning, and I fear one day that a child's going to get hit. There's, because if you have that traffic that's going into the mill now, you have all these trucks, they're super, super high, people waving you in to come in on the intersection. We share that street with the gas station. So if they're blocking off the gas station to get in or get out, they use Green Street, although the street's not, it doesn't have Green Street listed. People think it's like a dead end, but it's not. And just to get in or out of there, I mean, I would just fear a child.
So again, you know, you know where we're at, we're Toll Brothers, we're right up the road. If this is something that you guys are willing to let us help with, we're happy to discuss in ways that we can help, whether we can do the work, as long as you don't interest us in doing it, or, you know, we can help fund it or whatever it is, but we'd like to help make it just a little safer for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Paul, if we don't have their names already, maybe when they called the borough, I don't know. Do we have them that we can reach out?
I have Mr. Frick's email. I can, I can share it with you.
And I, I believe I just responded to an email today, I think that was sent to me. Yes. Thank you, yes. Thank you. We'll be in touch.
That's, that's just for council, that's an odd section because it's a state road, but the Bridge Commission is involved, so I don't think that's a borough thing.
It, it, it's something that we can discuss. It's, it's not really the borough, it is PennDOT, but they look at it as it's something that they would prefer that we would raise the issue instead of you raising the issue. So, so, but it really is not the borough. So, and I know that's confusing. You know, that's. Yes. Correct. Yes, yes.
I'll be happy to initiate that.
Zachary Mann?
Good evening. It's come to my attention through conversations with various members, oh, Zachary Mahan, 120 Barnsley Ave. It's come to my attention through a variety of conversations that I've had with members of the community that the employment of Morrisville Borough Chief McClay is in question. And just as an active member of the community, I'd like to just urge the council to take pause and consider what we have in Chief McClay. I've been working in public health and substance misuse prevention for a number of years now and all throughout Bucks County, and I actually haven't really encountered a police chief who's been as engaged in that conversation and as willing to engage with community health in the way that Chief McClay has as a partner. I've found that in my time, that Chief McClay has actually been pretty forward-thinking, recognizing that his desire is to see youth and young people thrive and reach their fullest potential. And the best way to do that is through partnering with community members and to take early steps together to change behaviors and culture at a young age. And so he's even worked with myself, members of the school district, to introduce programs and activities and things that would be reaching kids at a younger age. And this has been the work that I've most enjoyed, engaging with Chief McClay. He knows that if we can reach kids early on, we won't really have to see them experience jail time or time behind bars or in police cars. And so his mentality so far has exceeded my expectations for what I would want or desire in a police chief in my town. I've enjoyed partnering with him on several occasions to plan opportunities to strengthen the police and community relationships in town. Some of these events you might be familiar with, such as National Light Out, the summer movie series, there's trunk or treat, which is actually coming up in a couple of weeks, and the National Prescription Drug Takeback Day, just to name a few things. He also helped us plan an event that we called Box a Cop Night, and it was really funny. It was Wii boxing, just to be clear, it wasn't physical boxing. But, you know, kids really enjoy the opportunity to meet police officers and kind of have a level playing field with them. And actually, the kids all won, so that was great for them. Chief McClay has always been willing to engage in the conversation around seeking the health and safety of Morrisville beyond simply enforcing the laws to actually working to prevent the need to enforce them in the future. And this is something that really matters a lot to me because I work in prevention, right? So the idea is, let's get ahead of the problem and really work to address it before it becomes a problem later on. In my work running the Sodrick Youth Center and the Morrisville Community Coalition, I've found a great ally in Chief McClay, and I humbly request that you cease any conversations now and in the future of removing or replacing one of our community's greatest allies, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Donna Wilson?
Good evening. Donna Wilson, 24 East Post Road. It's been rumored that some of, some members of council are trying to get rid of our police chief. The citizens of this community deserve to know what is being done to our police chief. This council voted to have an investigation of the chief, and the taxpayers are paying for it, only to find little of consequence. What did they charge? What did they find out? Why are the residents not informed? Issues brought up by members of the community disgruntled because the chief has insisted that they followed the law like the rest of us. How was a new smoke shop allowed to be by Trenton Lakes Bridge? I thought there was an ordinance in this town that we could have no more smoke shops. So how did that happen? I understand no permits have been given, had been issued for that building, and there were beams that were being removed, causing hazardous situations. I'm appalled that the chief, as the borough emergency manager, was reprimanded for stepping up and taking care of the matter. Every one of the residents and companies have to follow the rules, so what was the problem with the chief making sure that that happened? Since our police chief was hired, the incidents of robberies, burglaries, and Since our police chief was hired, the incidents of robberies, burglaries, and even stolen vehicles are down. Do you remember the mess the police department was in before he came? He's created an effective, efficient, and well-trained police force, and he has accomplished all of that while staying within his budget every year. So ask yourself, is this personal or is this political? How much will this lawsuit cost the borough when the council unlawfully terminates our chief? Are there any other investigations going on involving the police department or the council members that we should know about? How much are we paying these lawyers and investigators? Wouldn't that money be better spent in hiring additional officers, just like the chief has asked? Why is everything done in executive sessions? Why are the residents of Morrisville kept in the dark? I would venture to say that there are many residents, obviously proven tonight, that have high praise for the chief and his officers, and I do not think terminating, I do not think terminating chief is a good idea for our town. Why are certain members of this council trying so hard to get rid of our police chief before elections? Isn't that one of those things that kind of makes you go hmm? Lastly, and no offense to you. Lastly, I have a question about the borough manager. She was hired two years ago. We were told that the borough would pay for her to stay in a local hotel Monday through Thursday until she moved to Bucks County. Has she moved closer? Are we still paying for her to stay in a hotel? How much has that cost our town so far? I have nothing against you, Judith, nothing. But I do not think it's right that we are still paying for your weekly living expenses for a hotel. It's an unnecessary bill being paid by taxpayers. And aren't we all questioning where our money's being spent? Don't think that should happen. Thank you.
Mary Taylor.
I have a real, one real quick thing. Scott, Scott Holbert, can you make like a, give like, why, like, we're not, we're not trying to hide anything, like it's, like, explain the, why?
Why everything's not in executive session?
Yes.
The reason every, it's Pennsylvania laws that relates to employee rights. The employer, until an actual action's taken, is not permitted to disclose information. They, we're, there's not, we're not allowed to speak about it in public yet. Counsel, staff, any professionals. So that's why it has to be discussed in executive session.
So we have to wait until he's fired to know what's going on behind that door over there? That's not fair to us.
If you think that's not fair, contact your state rep and ask them to change the law. I would, I would love to say it's different, but that is the state law and that is to protect employee rights. This is everyone's employee rights. When, if any actual action is taken.
So is it too late once he's fired? It's too late, right? He's fired, what can we do about it?
There could be other action other than that. I am, I'm telling you that there can be other action, that's all I can tell you.
Gary Taylor.
Good evening, Gary Taylor, 405 Hamilton Boulevard. Glad to be here this evening. I was here last week, last session, we talked about it. I want to ask, could you use that up here? Thank you very much. 405 Hamilton Boulevard, I'm also pastor of Compass Fellowship. I just want to let you folks know that we're again having our annual Halloween trunk or treat for the community. It's going to be in the vacant lot across from our church facility over there. There's a big vacant lot there, and if anybody else, effectively, if anybody wants to, you can let people know, anyone from the community is invited to come. If you want to bring your, your vehicle and open your trunk, I'll be glad to have that take place. It'll be on the 30th of November, the Philadelphia mischief night, if you are in this area. So I wanted to just make that also. Donna, we're planning on having our floats in the Winterfest parade again, so just want to make sure we have that on the calendar, thinking that Winterfest, first Saturday of December. I heard those comment about the cigarette. I've often said we should have a cigarette tax. I realize statewide it's tough to do that, but we are the only community with the same situations, and so if Philadelphia can do it, why can't we? Because we have a free bridge going to a major metropolis across the, across the river. No other community in Pennsylvania has that, except for maybe East of to make that argument. I think it's a good argument to use our, use our congressmen or legislators and representatives and so forth to make that case in Harrisburg, give us that special commission. If we were to put five cents or 10 cents, I have no idea what it'd be, a tax per cigarette, per pack of cigarettes, we'd equalize our ability to match Jersey prices and make a little less, you know, traffic here and a little less smoke shops. And if we have to put up with them, maybe we give some tax money and reduce our property taxes. I'd also like to speak about the police chief again. I passed out a letter last week so you all know, last time so you all know where I stand on this matter. It was good to hear Commissioner Marsaglio say she's been working with him on this matter. I think he's been helpful and very responsive to our needs. I haven't heard anything from the staff, the next one of the, as our solicitor said, why? I think it's, I'm being preemptive in saying, we shouldn't ever hear anything because this should not take place, okay? If it does, I think first for some of the people here that there'll be a lot of uproar after the fact, and maybe going back and trying to hire again, because firing would be the exact wrong, wrong action. I think you ought to make it public, you decide to stop this, make it public at this meeting, or before election day, I think you're just foregoing this thing. You've settled it, it's done, and we're not pursuing this anymore. That would calm things down for our town and give us a good police chief to continue on. If you decide to go on this, I have three suggestions. One, you should make it clear that you're not going to file, or you are going to file with us. If you can't make that, we'll have to assume you are. If so, then we need to, you should go public and do this action before the election so we can, if we wish, fire you for firing him. I think we need to do that. I think, we also need to, sorry, my phone got off. Let's pass to Zach, by the way, let me see if I can official title. Third thing is, any note should be taken in public. Vote. If you don't take the vote in public, you do it behind closed doors, you should let us know who voted for and who voted against after the fact. We need to know that, and that would be something that you could let us know after the fact, obviously. Lastly, my opinion, anyone who votes for this, we should retain them in the office, okay? He's done a great job for us. I have my letter from the last time I was here. If anyone in the audience here would like to copy, I'd be glad to get it to them. I do want to finish up and say, I do appreciate everything you do. You have a hard job, you work here practically no pay, so thank you for the job. You need to make my decision on this, but I realize that we all put a lot of effort into this without very much response, and usually just negative response. So thank you for your job.
Dave McCall.
First time I'm here, guys, so bear with me. Sorry. Dave McCall, 506 Hillcrest Ave. I didn't really prepare as much as everybody else, but I just kind of wanted to give you guys a, the perception that I've gotten from George over the last couple of years. I lived here for about eight years in Morrisville. I rented on Hillcrest and ended up buying a house down the road and fixing it up a couple of years ago. And now me and my wife have our first kid, we have a dog. We love Morrisville, we love the borough, and I guess I'll start with George. I met him a couple of years ago, just some incidents down the river. I'm a big fisherman, so Morrisville's a spot for me. And, you know, just really genuine and polite and respectful to me. And, you know, over the years, living in Morrisville, I kind of developed a pretty good friendship with the guy. It wasn't until a couple of years ago when we were building our house on Hillcrest that I realized that George was revving my soccer games when I was playing youth soccer. And he remembered me, surprisingly, which I thought that was kind of interesting. And then, you know, like I said, we've kind of developed a friendship since then. I'm going to take a common sense approach here with him. You know, just knowing his background, consequently, he, and ironically, he grew up in Ronhurst, Philadelphia, where my in-laws are from, from Ronhurst. Not such a great neighborhood now, but back in the day, apparently it was pretty good. My common sense approach here is, you've got an ex Philadelphia police officer who did a great job down there, came up to Morrisville, and now is supporting this community, and actually, he's told me he's fallen up with this community a little bit. That being said, you know, going forward, you have the guy with his resume with a commanding demeanor and a poise that, you know, oftentimes, police officers don't bring to the position. So my point is, who else are you going to get? What can you do better than this guy? He's got a commanding stature, he's good talking with people, speaking with people, rather. He holds himself respectfully, very slow to anger. This is the kind of guy that I think we need in Morrisville. And I'll tell you one other thing, too. You know, my wife's met George a handful of times, and she feels safe with George in this area. And you know what? That means a lot to me, and I'm sure it probably means a lot to everybody else, too. Granted, you guys might have your own stories about George or some of the other police staff here, but that's just my story. And I just think going forward, he's a good candidate to keep here. That's all I say.
Thank you. Deborah Colgan.
Deborah Colgan, 120 West Hendrickson Avenue. As you're hearing, the public has been aware that the borough has been pursuing legal action to remove the police chief, but we were never privy to what those specific charges are. We were left to think that the police chief must have engaged in very serious misdeeds as council has hired legal counsel using our limited tax dollars and has devoted a lot of precious time to address them. But the reality is quite the opposite. The charges are bogus. In one instance, the chief deescalated a situation that resulted in a satisfactory outcome for all. Isn't that what we want our police to, police to do? Instead, a complaint was filed with the DA who cleared the chief of any wrongdoing. But still, council is pursuing it. Another case involves the ticketing of untagged, of an untagged boat parked on the street. Thankfully, the police enforce our laws by ticketing or towing untagged, abandoned, or illegally parked vehicles. It's a simple action that keeps us from looking like a junkyard and something so I would think we would all be grateful. Other charges are frivolous and complete fabrications. Anyone who has met the police chief would know that they are false or twisted facts that don't resemble anything close to how he operates. As we are learning more about what the borough is doing with this, it's obvious that there are personal vendettas, egos, and misplaced power grabs fueling all of it. I am stunned that council, especially those who scream about the EIT, are wasting our precious tax, our precious tax dollars on petty and made up charges against a police chief who came here and cleaned up a force that was more akin to Keystone Cops or frat house. He's brought, he has revamped office operations and brought a higher level of expertise to the force. He's resolved numerous lawsuits, he resolved numerous lawsuits that the borough faced. He kept his spending under budget, and most importantly, he has kept Morrisville safer. He's broadened community policing, developing positive relationships that enable police to better respond to community needs. He's extensive relationships outside of the borough that enable him to tap into expanded resources. He brought respect for our local police back. So tell us, how much money are you and time are you spending on this craziness? What are the consequences of your action? Are you, are your efforts going to bring us a safer community? What is the impact to our readiness in the event of dire emergencies, like shootings or disasters? Do your actions help attract high-quality candidates to our police force? Consider the money that you are spending could be put toward compensating police adequately. You only offer a measly $30 an hour for a job that requires donning a bulletproof vest and a prayer for safety every day before going to work. I ask any of you who support these expensive, ridiculous legal actions, wouldn't your time be spent, be better spent actually improving Morrisville? Support our police and let the police chief do his job. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Prul. Okay. Jose Delcia? Sorry for the pronunciation.
My name's Derek Prul, I live at 244 Stockton Avenue.
Yes.
My name's Jose Del Cid, I work with a visiting visitor. So my name's Derek Prul, I live at 244 Stockton Avenue. I'm here today to talk about a problem I've had with Chief McClay in the past. It happened in May of 2021, and then this past June as well. When I have Mr. Del Cid working at my house, coming by, giving him a problem back in May 2021, he's working on my house. Chief McClay had a complaint from a neighbor about a parking situation. He was parked in front of his house, excuse me, Mr. Del Cid was parked in front of a neighbor's house. Legally, no issues, no nothing, and he decided to just walk in my house, no knocking, no nothing, just decides to give him a hard time about where he's parking on the street, telling him where he's going to move to, not asking him to move his car, telling him what he's going to do. I'd just gotten out of the hospital, I'm trying to make my house handicap accessible. I don't have time for this. I was on a machine trying to get liquid out of my lungs, and I have him come to me with this worker's afraid that something's going to happen to them because of him just walking in my house? That's the authority somebody takes? And then this past year, with the posting of a permit outside of my house working, they're ripping off the front of my house once again to make it handicap accessible. We were told that, I was told that it doesn't need to be posted because we're ripping off the front of the house. Where am I going to put the permit? They said, no, when you start building, that's when you put it up. And he shows up and just gives people, just giving the workers a hard time, saying, where is this? Not asking any questions, demanding things. Who's in charge? Who's doing this? Come on. You know, you just, if you just ask a couple of questions, people, you know, it's taking the edge off the things. It's just not something that I want or need in my house. It's trying to make it accessible. I'm not breaking any laws. I paid my permits, I have them, would have showed it to him. I was, I was out back at the time, when, out back of, across the street when he showed up, or else I would have showed it to him. Everybody in the office downstairs knew who I was, knew the house. It's not like you don't know who I am in the wheelchair. You could have asked them if they know anything about it. Grew up in this town, most of the people downstairs know who I, know my family. You can just ask any question, but instead chose to go that route. I called the borough twice after each occurrence, left my phone number, no phone number, no phone calls back, no stopping by my house. I have to sit outside in the driveway, just sit there all day, hoping that I'll stop. If, if he does, if he doesn't, you know, it is what it is. I'm not saying he needs to come by my house every single day, but nobody, nothing else happens. But then across the street from where Mr. Del Cid was parked, people are parked the wrong way, people are parked there with wrong tags on their vehicle, but he stops and gives him a hard time. And not those guys, they didn't get any tickets. I know, because I was out there 10 minutes later, just sitting there all day. There were no tickets on their cars. I just think something needs to be done about that part. And when I come down to, just second thing to everything, what they were talking about with the bridge over the canal, I can't cross over that, I have to drive in the middle of Pennsylvania Avenue. It is a pretty big inconvenience, it not being fixed, so if you could do- So if you could do something about that, too.
Can I add to that? So I come all the way from right into the work to touch on their points. You guys have limited income tax dollars that you guys have to spend. Imagine us paying the police chief X amount of dollars to go tell somebody to move their car when it's legally parked, registration, tags and everything are where they should be. That, you know, I am putting my pennies into your economy, into your local economy. And I am being harassed. He drives multiple times throughout the day. Where I come from, that's an intimidation tactic. I'm not okay with that. I'm not, you know, but that's just speculation on my part. I'd appreciate if you let me speak without your comments. Thank you. So to touch on those points, it's very uncomfortable for somebody like myself and for workers like myself to be harassed in that manner. All we're doing is working. Everything is legally done. Everything is followed properly downstairs. And everybody knows who Derek is. Everybody knows who I am downstairs. And the fact that he even reached out to a couple of the inspectors and asked them to ticket me because his said permit wasn't being displayed during the demo stage where we were told that it didn't need to be up. So that's my little two cents on everything. And I think somebody like that is supposed to make me feel comfortable and protected, not the opposite. And I don't feel anywhere near comfortable with somebody like that in charge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Reifmeyer, 335 Hamilton Boulevard. I'm speaking as private resident. At last month's council meeting, it was stated that the borough's two new police vehicles were purchased with money from a grant. I firmly believe that you should always give credit where credit is due. The money for the vehicles that were purchased was with casino money. The money, we weren't, the borough wasn't entitled to that money, casino money, because we're not a border town. Our county commissioners fought to get us that money. And I think we need to properly acknowledge them for their help instead of brushing under the carpet as if it's something other than what it actually is. Thanking people when they help you encourages them to help you further. And that's pretty much, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment section of our meeting. Let's move on to approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of 9:19, 2023.
Any discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to finance. Call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay bills.
So moved.
Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Paul, I do have
Yes, ma'am.
Just two questions that the manager may be able to answer. The Gilmore bill for the $4,700, the C2P2 grant was, what was that for? Was that for when they came here for the Parks and Recs meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then one other question. It's actually on page seven. It's a public notice for legal advertisement. This one's for $576. I was just wondering, that's quite large. Even if you group some together, I'm not sure. Usually, they're only between 30 and 40, maybe $50 apiece. Did we do some large legal advertisement?
Yes, the bid advertisements.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Did I see a check that went out to Nancy Sherlock?
Yes, you did.
What was that for?
It was a reimbursement for the balloon man.
Oh, okay. Is that our process? I don't know. I'm just asking Judith. Is that our process that council pays for vendors or?
No, the process would be that the borough would pay for the vendor.
Unless you find the vendor 48 hours before the event.
Is that our process?
That was the process. I can confirm if that's the way we have to move forward. But he was found just days before.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to reports.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'll start out thanking everybody tonight to express our pains. I do appreciate it. The gentleman in the back. My door is open. Three days. Please stop and talk. As everybody knows, my door is always open. And I will sit down and talk to any of our citizens. Let's talk about our robberies. We had a little bit of a bad run on robberies up on Trenton. Two of our stewards were robbed, pointed knife. On September 2nd, 9:15, a male entered the Dollar Tree and robbed the cashier, pointed knife, $150, and fled on a bike. The same male, two days later, robbed the Triple One Smoke Shop, $500 US currency that day, and $700 in the back of the products. We were able to come up with a suspect. We talked to Trent Police. They were able to grab him for us. And he was extradited to Bucks County. He was on Bucks County Prison on $150,000 bail. Very good success, very quickly apprehending this male. Going back to August 3rd, if everybody remember, we had a robbery at 2 South Delmore and another cigarette place. That $5,400 in US currency was taken. The scarbacked box that was underneath the counter. We have several suspects. We are finishing up search warrants, and I expect to have them arrested by next meeting. That'll clear all our robberies up. Halloween's coming up. I will have extra patrols out there. I will be out there again on my bike like I am every other year. And we expect to have a successful Halloween like we have in the past. Councilwoman Alau, Officer Hallis is up to 15 and a 30 full inspections. So he's halfway through the program.
When do you think he'll be done?
I don't know. I will get back to you, but that information would suffice at this point.
Yeah, that's great. I've been getting a lot of residents complaining that there are no officers on South Pennsylvania Avenue trying to enforce the 25 mile an hour speed limit. And you heard Toll Brothers coming in about the issues right there when you're entering and exiting where the trucks don't stop. They block the intersections. A lot of residents are telling me when they're coming off the Route 1 pass, they can't get onto South Pennsylvania Avenue and they actually sit there for 20 minutes. So is there anything you want to say to those residents that I can pass along?
Well, you know, you don't have radar. I contacted the senator who sponsored that bill today, and there hasn't been any movement on that since March 3rd. It's very, very hard to enforce speed when you don't have radar. You know that.
I do know that, but those trucks and cars aren't going, I mean, the speed limit's 25. They're going 40 miles an hour plus. It's not like they're just going 30.
Mr. Leder, I'm going to have to throw you on the bus. Mr. Leder can and has pulled all the speed limits off that sign, and they are not speeding. We have stats that show that. And Mr. Leder will, should give you those stats.
I can give you pictures when I sit there.
Yeah, you're going to get one or two, no doubt about it. Okay, but I'm telling you, we have stats and we can give them to you. I'll tell you how many cars are going this fast. We can't break it down to trucks, but we can break it down to vehicles. And he downloads everything. We look at it. Your situation at that intersection, that is volume. They back up, all the way back up to Route 1.
But the trucks don't stop at the stop sign.
Oh, wait a second. Can I, let me answer one question that you've asked me.
All right.
Okay. There is no light there to let the trucks out of that factory. So that is something that has to be done by council. You want to pass and put another light up there? That can be done. That is the whole traffic space. That is not the police department's responsibility. I can't, you know, I can't do anything. If you have a suggestion, we're more than willing to listen. But I have two officers on the street. What do I do with the trucks coming out of that factory? What do I do with the volume of trucks that are coming off of Route 1 going down to the mill? They're lined up at that light, all the way back up.
I understand, but there are times when they're not coming to a stop at the stop signs. They're using their jake brakes.
Let's stay, can the police stay in one subject first?
Well, you already said there's nothing you can do, so I'm moving on.
I'm asking for a suggestion.
Well, you're the police law chief. That's a traffic problem, not, so I'm asking for your.
Problem that is going to have to be solved by the state. You know that's a state highway. And I really love to be able to do more there, but I can't. There's no, do not block the intersection. It's a driveway coming out of the, you know, out of the gas station and out of the.
Well, it's more than that. It's also the ramps. The ramps, they're not stopping at the ramps. They're using their jake brakes, and we have an ordinance about the jake brakes. You can hear them.
As soon as I have my officer out there to do that, he will be aggressively taking care of that situation.
Looking forward to that.
Well, we still need a couple more, we still need to hire a couple more officers to be able to make that happen. Okay, so that's what we got to talk about. Test is coming up. We have 145 candidates taking that next test. Hopefully, we get a couple of them. And moving on, the truck scale that we have in our parking lot is out of service. The steel beams have rusted on the side. It's going to cost probably somewhere in the range of $20,000 to $30,000 to fix that scale. I'm waiting for a scale company to send a salesperson and an engineer to tell us whether it can be fixed.
Has it been, I know Judith had put money aside to make sure that that scale is up to date. Has it been monitored?
Oh, yeah.
Inspected?
It's inspected every six months and calibrated and certified. But the one beam on the right-hand side finally went, and the whole scale now is bent over to the right-hand side, which now makes it out of calibration.
Andrew, do we have money in the budget to fix that?
This is the first I'm hearing about this. I had spoke with John Leder recently and asked me if the chief had talked to me, and I said, no. So he did mention it, but I hadn't heard from George. So I don't know. I'll have to look into the budget and see what we can come up with.
I don't have any facts to give you yet. So if I told you it's $30,000 and it ends up being five, then it's great. But if it ends up, I tell you it's five, it ends up being 50. So when they come out and they tell me what it's going to cost, I'll put a report into the borough manager. You have money sitting aside still from the grants that you got that you could use to fix that. There's still a lot of money sitting there. But that's a little far down the line because I got to get a price on what it's going to cost.
I look forward to that.
The homicide at 20 Lenora, everybody knows it was solved. Went to a preliminary hearing and it was held for trial. Our only homicide in the last couple of years. I'm very happy about that. It was solved by the detectives. Todd McDonald, the officer that we hired, is in the middle of his FTO program, and he is doing very well and is very happy working here in Morrisville. And last, I want to talk about this co-responder program. It's a win-win. It's free for two years. I have a dime in my pocket. These social workers will come in, and we have a lot of frequent fires that have a lot of issues. These social workers will follow up with those people and help them and continually help them. So hopefully, it brings down the calls from us going back out to that same person, whether it's a drug issue, a mental health issue. These people will be tied in with our officers, and our officers will be communicating with them. They're going to be working mostly nine to five, but they will be in communication with the guys who are working all night long. So it will help us in the long run. And you talked about that, you know, getting some kind of raw deal from Yarley and Lower Mcfield about money. After two years, this doesn't work out, all we do is say, thank you, but no. But hopefully, in the meantime, Diane will come up with more money for a, that won't cost us any more money. But even if it does, I think you're going to be very happy with their response and what it takes off the shoulders of some of our officers going back to the same person over and over and over again. So I'm nowhere close to being on the liberal side for social workers. This is a good program. This is a very good program Diane's put together, and we need to support that. And it will help your officers in the long run. It'll help your people in your town that really need the help that we can't follow up with. These people will be able to. So with that being said, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Actually, John, I don't want to throw you under the bus, but that machine that does the monitors, traffic down there, does it count cars or not?
Yes.
Does it count every car that goes by? Like, how's that thing work?
It counts cars and speed of the cars. Times cars. Doesn't tell you if there's a car or a truck, but it tells you everyone goes by.
So if you had a car doing 60 miles an hour down that street, and then you had five cars coming down and slowing down to 5 miles an hour and making a right on Anderson or making a left on to East Cleveland, the speed that we're saying, like, no one's speeding down there, that's going to lower the average. Each person that turns off that street that slows down to 8 miles an hour as they're making the turn, the machine is picking that car up, is doing 8 miles an hour.
It's not picking up the cars back, all the way back here on Anderson, though it's not. But if you're slowing up, it's counting that. But it will count in the average, but it also counts individually.
So when you're going down South Pennsylvania Avenue, that thing won't pick up your speed until you're past Anderson or?
Now you're close to it, yes. Right, John? Yes.
So it's not factoring anybody turning off that street slowing down?
No, it's factoring where the speed sign is.
Yeah, I realize that, but because if you're going down the street and you slow down and you turn right on Anderson, that thing picks you up doing 8 miles an hour in the middle of your turn on to Anderson, it doesn't know that you turned off. It thinks you went by at 8 miles an hour, and it's going to lower the average.
It's not picking up back at Anderson. And even if it does, John hits a button, gives us every vehicle that goes by and how fast they're going by. And then he answers that, he hit another button, and he comes up with the average. We can do it by times, everything.
So it can tell us how many vehicles are going past there?
Yes.
Okay. One more question. I have people asking me in the borough. There was a court case last month. And reporter for the Courier-Times quoted you as saying, "It was much better for everyone for it to be continued." Did you talk to the victim? The woman that was left for dead up by the bridge that lives in Hamilton Township has to schlep over here three times for a court hearing, the first two that got blown off, and it was better for everyone for it to be continued. I guarantee you, it wasn't better for her. Did you speak to her? Did you apologize to her for brought or anything? How could you say that if you didn't even talk to her? That woman has better things to do than come over here for three court hearings, the first two that are blown off. Where in the world, you got a judge, a prosecution, the law, and a criminal defendant? Where in? Where in the world does, is, is the prosecution and the law over here advocating for this side? I asked the reporter, I called the Courier-Times, that's Savabley, I don't know how to say her name. I said, "Did this ever happen before?" And she chuckled, and she said, "No." And I said, "Can you explain this?" And she said, "No." Can you explain it?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
That morning, well, let me start back up. I'll back up to when the incident occurred. I called the lady who was hit that day.
Mm-hmm.
And no, she wasn't left for dead. I talked to her.
She could have been.
Excuse me, let me finish.
Okay.
She wasn't left for dead. I asked how she was. She was bruised, mostly from the seatbelt, but she was okay. I got her insurance information that she needed to get her moving. So yeah, I did communicate with her in the beginning. So now we, so now we go forward. The mayor called me that morning and said that he's tied up with his mother getting chemo. Is there any way possible I can contact the courts and ask them if we can postpone it to another date? That way, the victim doesn't drive over here and have to sit there and hear, oh, it's going to get postponed. I did it hours in advance, okay? The mayor at that point also told me that he had emailed the, the judge, asking for continuance, and never heard back from the judge. So was it better that, the case ended up going on anyway, but was it better to get a bench warrant? And then the lady would have had to come back again later anyway when it was finally heard? So yeah, continuances are okay. And have I done that in the past? Absolutely. I ran a detective division in Philadelphia where we had 100 cases every day. And I had people calling me, go, "Lieutenant, I want to be there, I just can't, I'm tied up, don't it? Is there any way you can speak on my behalf?" How many times does a defense attorney speak on the behalf of the defendant? Okay? This was not a homicide. This was a leaving the scene of an auto accident where the lady, it was better for the lady not to have to come in than have to drive in and find out what's going to get continues. That's why they tried to do an advanced continuance. So no, I'm not taking the side of anybody at that point. Yeah, we have prosecutor, we have a judge, and yes, we have a defense attorney. I'm not taking the side of anything. I'm on the side of justice. I'm on the side of making sure it works the best it can. And continuances happen all the time. Every day it happens. So no, I wasn't taking anybody's side. I was making sure, try to work the best it could.
I, I respect your answer, but I know that if I was in any small town in USA and was the, the victim of something, and the person that wronged me seemed to have the chief of police on their side, it just doesn't look right.
No, you were wrong. That's an unfair statement, Councilman. I'm not on his side.
You called the judge for him.
That doesn't, no, I called, I called so it'd be continued. I asked for a continuance on his behalf.
Third time, don't you think that was enough continuance? This was the third time. This poor victim, this is the third continuance.
Councilman, I did before judges that we've had six continuances, okay? That's a game that.
That doesn't make it right.
What, but doesn't make it wrong. I'm also the person who called the lady in the beginning. I'm the only person that called her to see how she was and to make sure she got insurance information so she could get her car fixed. So don't act like I don't have a heart.
I'm not saying that.
Oh, you are.
No, I'm not. I did not say you don't have a heart. I'm saying that it just, it just doesn't look good for an out-of-town victim to have the police chief advocating for the criminal defendant.
I'm not advocating for him. I'm asking for a continuance from the court.
He only asked for one himself.
I am a part of the court system.
Thank, thank you, Chief. Let, let's move on, Mr. Robbins, we're done.
Chief, yeah, Chief Clay, I have a question on the co-responder program, if you don't mind.
Sure.
When I did the ride around a year ago or so with Corporal Smith, the first person we, the first offender we picked up was from Trenton. You report, and so he brought them back, and he explained to me she's over all the time. He, the response, and his attitude, put her in the back of the car, drugs on the State Street, drops her in front of her mother's house, best he can do. Then today, you tell us about the break-in, different kid coming out of Trenton, he's going to be arrested. Some of the most, shouldn't say most, many of the problems we have with either crazy people or criminals are coming out of Trenton, in that area. Do the coresponders respond to them also and just drop them back off? Or how do we stop the flow of, for lack of a better phrase, nutcases coming across from Trenton and hanging out? And I see them all the time in front of the shopping center.
Oh, I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
And I won't use your language.
Thank you.
But we do have people here with mental health issues.
Okay.
And we will talk to the coresponders and have them meet these people on the street. And if we can provide services for them, that's great. But if they're not going to accept the services, and they're just going to go across a bridge and come back again later, your hands are pretty well tied when that comes back.
Is there?
These people, social workers, will do what we ask them to do. They're, they're there to help us.
And that I understand.
Our job easier to do whatever. I mean, I know, we see the same people over and over again, just like this guy. You know, they, they were from Trenton. Not all our problems come from Trenton, don't.
I understand, but I live by the Cowan Street Bridge, and I got the Morrisville Shopping Center. Yes, I see them coming across, they're begging their hand, handling.
You're right.
Commerce Mark has got the pictures up there. Don't, don't give food to these people. So once the coresponders pick them up and bring them back to Trenton, then what keeps them from walking back across the bridge again? Or is there a co-responder program in Trenton they can deliver them to?
Well, do you want to then try to figure out if they're a homeless person? And try to like set them up with services here? Or do you want to take them back? I don't know that. I'm going to have, that's going to be something that, when we do get that person, they haven't hired this coresponder yet.
Right, and I'm not challenging, I'm just seeing the problems that are in front of my front door and that whole area, and that's, if that's where it's coming from, it has to be addressed.
I agree. And we're going to have problems here that Lower Midfield's not going to have. And I don't know what problems they're going to have, but they're not going to have ours.
That's for sure.
So we're going to, you know, single out the person who's going to be this coresponder and work with our officers and figure out the best way to do for the people that are in front of 7-Eleven, the people that are in front of the fruit store.
Okay, great, thank you.
But we will, we will, I'm, I'm looking forward to this program. I'm really looking forward to them really hustling and doing, doing well by us.
Okay, yeah, I know they've done well in Ben Salem, I'm, I'm interested in it too. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you, Chief. Borough managers report.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, there was a lot of talk about the Bridge Street project a little earlier. That is moving along well. We have some lane restrictions in place. The final inspection is December 4th of 2023. We're going to be working on a ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the positivity of, of this trail. We, the reason that it's not going to be done in November is because of the fact that we had some issues with the, excuse me, the railing that is being ordered. So that pushed us back to December 4th, but we're still working quite well with our timeline. So it'll be very exciting. Everybody watch for the news with a ribbon-cutting ceremony that'll be coming up in December, hopefully sometime. As you can see, our front parking lot is blocked off. We have the roofers on the roof. We're finally able to get this roof under, uh, wraps of, of being secure and water-free. So we're hoping that that should be completed by November 1st. We hope that, um, that, uh, everyone will be able to view that this is such a wonderful thing because, again, we waited for a long time for this to happen. The other project that we have on our agenda this evening is the electrical supply project. That will be for new boxes and so forth throughout the building that are problematic. So we're hoping that that will be awarded shortly. The sewer line repair is 100% complete. All of those items were paid for by ARPA funds. We've also been working with the RDA with Blighted Properties, 327 Prospect Avenue. We're happy to say there'll be a vote this evening also for the possible sale of that building, and we'll see some good things taking place on that property also. The Policy and Ordinance Committee has been working on noise ordinance and alarm ordinance, so if you see those meetings up on our website, please don't hesitate to not come and, and be involved. We've also worked with the county endorsing the grant paperwork with the, the lot at the senior center. So I'm, I'm hopeful that there's positivity in that aspect also. And, and someone from the audience did mention about grant money for vehicles. That is something that when I first came to Morrisville, I said that we were able to get those funds and was told that we couldn't by certain people in the borough, and, and we did. I wrote the very first grant for a brand-new police vehicle, so I'm proud to say that we are on a good path when it comes to these items, and, and we do thank the county. I've been working with the county for some times, for some time on several items. The cars and of course, the, the, excuse me, the, uh, grants. And we're very thankful that they're helping us. That's all I have, thank you.
I, I have something. So just for the public and a question for Judith. So we just got notification from the Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Admin and, um, the counties. And what they have done is that they have taken South Pennsylvania Avenue, and they have removed it from the national highway system, and they changed as a primary intermodal, and they made Tyburn Road the primary intermodal. So their letter to me said that, um, the complex from a two-lane South Pennsylvania Avenue to the four-lane Tyburn Road will help alleviate and redirect a truck traffic currently traveling near the Mar, borough of Morrisville to Tyburn Road. The proposed changes are in accordance with the guidance under 23 CFR 470, and I hereby approve the following, and it just explains, you know, what they're doing. So my question for the borough manager is now that this is done and it's no longer the primary, there are things that the borough can do in order to try to, um, help with the truck traffic. For instance, Falls Township has where municipal waste trucks cannot go through their, their areas, and there is a designated route. So I'm wondering, is this things that we can start implementing? And are there ordinances we can start implementing, such as weight limits on trucks going through town? You know, other kinds of things. I'm not sure what else we can do, but we need to start delving into that.
Yes, that's very positive news, and, and I thought that you would report on that because you were highly involved in it. Thank you. And yes, there are things that we can work on, just as you had mentioned. We can, we can begin those, those items.
So who would have to do that? Does that come from you, or does that come from the policy? Or should I start looking into things?
It would be a good idea for the Policy and Ordinance Committee to, to look into things and along, you know, you can certainly be involved with that since you've been.
Should, should I call PennDOT as I'm working with the Toll Bridge, um, not Toll Bridge, Toll Brothers problem? Would PennDOT be able to direct us?
Yes, PennDOT will be able to direct us.
Okay.
And so anyone on council can, you know, jump in and, and help out. Thank you.
Yeah, and I also want to, um, talk about the, the couple people who talked about South Pennsylvania Avenue and the bridge. I, I know it's an eyesore, I know it's a problem, I know the road is falling apart, but I've been in contact with PennDOT about it, and we are on a schedule. And unfortunately, you just can't shift schedules around no matter, unless something drastic happens. But they are aware, and I do continue to call them, and I believe Scott Robinson, you've called them. Judith, you've called them. I don't know who else on council. Jen Nancy has called them.
Yeah, in fact, the last, I thought the last meeting that we had said that they were pushing it to 2005.
25.
25, that's correct. Yeah. It was supposed to be done, um, next year in 2024, and they pushed it to 2025. So these are things out of our control, no matter how much we try to push things forward. Part of the, part of the backup also was COVID didn't help.
The 95 bridge collapse, setback things, and then some of the roads up there that got washed out. No other roads in the state that, that were damaged.
Yeah, the 95, that was only 12 days.
Yes.
It would wait 12 years.
I know, but it pushed a lot, they pulled a lot of people, so think of all those projects.
And I know that several of you were on that phone call. It's been a while, but it wasn't the reason, we kind of fought back and we wanted it sooner. But because of what was going on in Bridge Street, it would just cause too much traffic congestion.
That was another issue, yes. Yes, but we've, we've been diligently trying to get the date moved closer though, regardless of all of these items. And, and people can help. I know that there was a gentleman in the audience who said, "If, if there's anything anyone can do." Residents can certainly write letters, write emails to your constituents. It is helpful, it truly is, so please don't hesitate. And if, if you need help with that, you know, we're certainly here, and we can guide you as to, you know, who to send emails to or, or what to do. We greatly appreciate it. I did leave one thing off of my report. The Leaf Drop Off will open October 18th. That's located at Riverview and Delaware Avenues. It's a drop-off site, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 3:00, Saturday and Sunday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So I just want to let everyone know that that is open for your convenience.
Yes, I was going to wait till the end of our discussion, but since you brought up the, um, the Bridge Street project, the canal project, I had had some discussions with Judith regarding the fencing. They had to take down five, possibly six, um, sections of the chain link fenced in order to get their equipment down onto the canal area. And I think it would be not just a good idea, but it would behoove us, even though they said that they're going to replace that, that we should, uh, speak to them about replacing that with a different kind of fencing. We're spending over a million dollars for a project, and then we're just going to throw, not we, PennDOT apparently said that they'll replace what they took down, and that's what they do. They replace what they, you know, just like the roads, will take it back to the way it's supposed to be or was. But I, I think if it even costs us a little bit of money, I think we should spend that money and make it much more presentable. And for the other gentleman that was talking about the, that, that's just to get to the brewery, that's not really true. This is a, this was a, this has been a gap for years, and, um, and it will actually bring more than just, you know, somebody to the brewery. It's, it's meant to have people who are biking the trail, that they don't have to stop what they're doing, walk up the steps with their bike, and then have to go to the other side of the street, so. And it's a 10, this was a 10-year process, which is almost embarrassing. But, um, part of that was money, and then when it got started again, I know this, Judith had mentioned this before, once it got started again, we actually had to do all revamping engineering because of the erosion and how it hadn't been touched for so long. So I do think it's a great project, but I do think that if we have an opportunity to make it just look a little bit nicer, a different kind of fencing, then, then we should do that. We could take the fencing all the way to the back, the backyard of the, um, of the 7-Eleven. I mean, we can't, we can't control what they're fencing, but if, if the fencing belongs to us, which I don't know it belongs to us, I'm told that it, it might be the, uh, the fireworks. But if it's the fireworks, then how is it that the, that PennDOT's not speaking to them and telling them what they can and cannot do? So I just think it's an opportunity to have more conversations. And I did speak to Joe down at the fireworks, and, and he told me to, uh, "We're going to look to see who exactly owns it, because it's right on the sidewalk. I don't really know myself." And I'm not even sure that we would need the six-foot fence. I mean, the, the actual, over the bridge, it's only two, uh, three feet. I know it's concrete, but my point is, if you're trying to save, uh, I, I'm not really sure, maybe for safety reasons, it's higher, um, but there's a, there's an attractive black fencing we could use or something different that would just add, and, I mean, it's aesthetically making it look nicer. I just, I just can't see spending, it's, and it is your money, it's our money, it's taxpayers' money. It's the state, the state's doing it, and it's our money, and I think that we should have a say in it. So I don't know where we go from here. I don't know. I know Judith said that she spoke at the last meeting about it, but I think that, and in something that someone said earlier, I'll be done in a minute, Bob. Something someone said earlier that if this was in another town, it never would happen. And the reason for that is because they push to make it right. And I think that we should take that opportunity and do that.
Sure, and Nancy, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you on this. The issues are that I have pushed, PennDOT is not willing to make any changes, and we do not own the property. PennDOT confirmed that we don't own the property, we don't own the fence. PennDOT confirmed that we don't own the property, we don't own the fence. PennDOT has been working actually with Sky King, they own the property. Apparently there was fencing put up years ago because of the pond and that's the reason it has to be the height that it is. That was the recommended height at the time, many years ago when it was done in the borough. I've done a lot of research, I've spent a lot of time on this to, and actually prior to speaking with you about it. It's actually in, you know, in my notes when we have had our meetings monthly, had our meetings monthly with PennDOT and DCNR. DCNR also is not willing to help with getting some type of a different fence.
Not on Bridge Street, you're right.
I've petitioned all of them, PennDOT, DCNR, everyone, and I have not been successful in getting anything different than what was originally there. So because of the fact that it's not our property, we don't have any jurisdiction over it, even though we are the go-through for this project, we don't have the final say-so. They do. So again, I've done everything in my power to try to get this changed.
Well, when they put that fence up, we should take it down and put other fencing up.
But we don't have, but it's private property. We don't have the right to do that. That's what I'm trying to say.
In cooperation with Scott, with the fireworks, possibly.
And that would be a council decision, you know, because of the monetary value.
We won't be making that this evening, but I've put it out there and I just think it's important that we do that. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Committee reports.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Thank you to all the volunteers who came out to our Oktoberfest. Of course, we lost power and I don't know, John, did we figure out was the PICO problem or what?
It was a transformer.
It was a transformer.
Yeah, I was saying it was a breaker or something like that, but no, it was a transformer that had blown, they had to repair it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you coming out on the weekend and doing that. I'm thankful the chief was there because all of a sudden the wind gusts came up and tents and tables flying everywhere. The kids did get a chance to be with the animals for a short time, so we'll have another meeting and we'll talk about some things coming up and what, we're going to go over the different reports from the analysis as we did in our open meeting. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We also had a meeting of the Policy and Ordinance Committee last week on October 11th, where we started our discussion of how to amend and intensify our noise ordinances. One of the things we have to do is we've got, we've got fragments of noise ordinances scattered throughout the code and we're going to try to consolidate that all in one place as some of the other municipalities have done. I'm still soliciting input from the public. We had a few members, a few residents who attended along with committee members last week and I encourage anyone who's interested in this issue to attend on November 8th. That's three weeks from tomorrow, I guess, at 7:00 and we'll continue our discussion. We're going to have, we've already circulated a few samples of other noise ordinances used by the municipalities, one of which Mike Atalia of Barry Izzard, our Zone Enforcement Officer, has adapted for, to fit into our code, but we've got a lot more work to do. We're really just getting started on this and I really want to hear what issues the residents have. You know, we know about the party house, we know about the Hookah Lounge, we know about Roosters, we, you know, we've made a run at that last year, but if you're interested in addressing noise nuisances, please come on November 8th. And meantime, anything that we have, that we generate in the form of proposed drafts, we'll put up on the website and we'll try to circulate to anybody who comes to the meetings. Any other committee reports? Okay, moving on to action items. Item 8A, call for a motion to adopt the 2023 Halloween policy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Do we need to read the policy?
That would be a good idea, yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Sherlock.
You're welcome to, if you want to. I mean, I don't have to.
I can't find it.
Okay. Tips for motorists, I'm sorry.
It's in the folder, yeah. Here we go.
He's going to read it.
This is, this is policy statement, Halloween trick-or-treat activity. It is the policy of the mayor and Borough Council that all door-to-door trick-or-treat activity in connection with Halloween shall take place on Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, until 8:00 PM. All children under 16 years of age shall be accompanied by a responsible adult. Tips for motorists, obey speed limits, watch for children walking along the road or who may run into the street. If you're going to a party, please remember to designate a sober driver. Tips for parents and guardians, buy or make brightly colored, highly visible costumes for children that do not interfere with a child's ability to see, hear, or walk. Add strips of reflective tape to darker colored costumes and trick-or-treat bags. Provide a flashlight or glow stick for children to carry. Always accompany children while they are trick-or-treating. Remind children to pay attention to their surroundings. Tips for children, walk instead of run when crossing streets. Look both ways for approaching cars before stepping off the curb. Walk on sidewalks whenever possible. Residents are cautioned not to permit anyone into their home unless they know the identity of such a person. Conversely, children and parents are cautioned not to enter anyone's home unless they know the residence and then only if they have the permission of a parent or guardian. Children should bring all edibles to their parent or guardian before eating such items. Parents should carefully inspect all items given to their children to ensure such items are safe. The mayor and Borough Council wish everyone a safe and happy Halloween holiday. So we've already, we already voted to adopt that, right?
No.
Okay.
I move that we adopt this.
We already have a question in a second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8B, call for a motion to award the contract for the electrical main distribution panel replacement at Borough Hall to the responsible low bidder, QPI Electrical, in the amount of $104,000 for the base bid. This bid includes the replacement of the electrical service distribution panel and five branch panels within the building.
So moved.
Discussion. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, Jane was going to ask a question. I did. So this, I know we have to take the lowest bid and we did have quite a number of bids. This one seemed a little lower than all the others. Is there any concern?
Not at this time. The engineer and the architect and myself reviewed the credentials of the company and so forth and their overhead is just not as much as some of the bigger companies, so we're anxious to get started.
Right. Okay, sorry, go ahead, vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8C, call for a motion per the recommendation of the Borough Engineer to approve the application for payment number one final for the Borough Hall sewer lateral replacement in the amount of $17,765 to Ben Franklin Plumbing.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8D, call for motion to acknowledge receipt of $54,468.06 from the Pennsylvania Department of the Auditor General and to approve distribution of 100% to the Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8E.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize for interrupting you. May I just confirm who this second was on that last action item?
Nancy.
Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Item 8E, call for a motion to approve the placement in Williamson Park of four benches being donated by the Oakville Girl Scout Council. Location of benches to be recommended by Public Works and approved by the Borough Manager.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
So is it, is it possible, John Leder, to put some of these benches up on the dike? No? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8F, call for a motion to approve dedicating Williamson Park Majors Field to Charlie Howard Majors Field. Let me start that again and get the reading right. Call for a motion to approve dedicating Williamson Park Majors Field to, quote, Charlie Howard Majors Field, along with approval to hang a 12-by-16-foot sign that reads Charlie Howard Majors Field on the Majors Clubhouse above the awning where the snack stand windows are.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in...
No, I was just going to say, Charlie.
Why are we doing this?
Charlie is a 93-year-old gentleman who's been working down at the park for many, many years and they're appreciative of his time spent down there.
He mows the lawns, he cuts the breasts, what is, is he related?
He's not mowing the lawns.
That's not asked what he does, other than being old.
Can Judith answer the question?
Go ahead, Judith.
Well, I, yeah, he didn't, he didn't ask anybody particular, Helen, that I'm aware of, but go ahead.
Well, she has all the information.
And so do we.
Okay, let's just go.
Yeah, just do it. Go ahead.
This gentleman has been involved down at the park for years at Williamson Park and he's been very involved with the children. If the children need something, he helps the children. If the coaches need something, he helps the coaches. He's been an integral part of what the Morrisville Little League coaches and children do on a weekly basis when they're having their games and so forth. So has nothing to do with maintaining the park, but, but he does, he does go around and he'll, you know, if there's garbage, he'll pick up garbage, anything virtually that is needed, that's really what he's there doing. But he's also very friendly with the children and the coaches and so forth. He's involved. He's sincerely involved.
He's...
Sure.
He's a gentleman in the golf cart. They, the, the, the Morrisville Little League bought him a golf cart, so now that he has trouble walking, they helped, they bought this golf cart and he now drives around. You're welcome.
Sure, we all appreciate what he's done for us. Excuse me? Yes, please.
I was captain on the imagination at the playground and I've been a member of this borough for 32 years and 32 years ago, he was working on the fields. He was maintaining all of the bases and the grounds and he helped with that. That man has volunteered his time for years and years and he is a fixture and beloved by many people.
Then thank you. I'm only here 21 years, I guess that's not good enough. I'm not really a baseball fan, so I go to Williamson Park, the O'Leary's is going to watch football, but thank you, that's why I am here.
Yeah, I think anyone who does that, love what he has done for the past 70 years, we owe him gratitude and something as small as that is because he has a thing to do.
I completely agree.
Now I know, thank you very much. Hence my question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8G, call for motion for approval to sell the 2011 Ford Van E250 white, VIN number 1FTNS2EW4BDA12527, mileage 101,000 miles, for a minimum bid of $5,000.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8H, call for motion to enter into the MOU agreement, Human Services Co-Responder Initiative in Lower Mickfield, Morrisville, and Yardley, MOU agreement.
So moved.
Kind of redundant. Any discussion?
No, I hope that it works out really well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8I, call for motion to approve the Buck Holmes LLC offer of $141,200 for the purchase of property known as 327 Prospect Avenue, Morrisville, PA 19067.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Call for a motion to adopt the Lights Out proclamation, which I think Ms. Sherlock is going to read for us.
Should I read it? We have to have a motion first.
Oh, okay, good point.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Simplistic.
So anyway, questions, comments? Ms. Sherlock, would you read the proclamation for us?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
It's quite simplistic. Whereas Marshall was established as a bird town in 2015 and there are street signs throughout the town depicting our dedication to the effort, and whereas most bird migration in the United States of America occurs in the spring between April 15th to June 1st and in the fall between August 15th and November 15th, and whereas an estimated 1 billion birds are killed each year due to nighttime light pollution, and whereas bird migration is one of nature's great wonders, and whereas birds typically follow established flyways, these are the routes that offer the best opportunities for rest and refueling along the way, and whereas Marshall is considered to be a part of that flyway the birds use, now therefore we request that the Marshall residents and commercial property owners take a small part to help the birds in this migration process and voluntarily dim or turn off non-essential exterior lighting between the hours of 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM during the spring and fall migration dates of April 15th to June 1st and August 15th to November 15th. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Comments?
Comments.
Do you have a comment?
I do. I'd like to ask the Chief of Police about what happens in the safety issues when the lights are dimmed at night.
I have a really difficult plan about, is it all the streetlights? Is it just unnecessary lighting? Really, I... I think that's one of the streetlights that we're out with.
Not the streetlights, Mr. Paul. It's, it's, first of all, it's voluntary and it's to turn off non-essential exterior lighting then, so, right.
What would be considered non-essential lighting?
Some, some people seem to light up their home quite a bit. I mean, we, this, but there's no lighting police to come and say, you have to turn this off, it's all voluntary. So someone doesn't feel safe and once they're light on, they keep the light on.
Essential's in the eye of the beholder, I believe, so. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Any other abstentions? Okay, motion carries, seven to one, six to one. Item 8K, call for a motion to adopt the Darletta Berry Johnson Day proclamation.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thanks, Bob. Nicely done.
This is my project. Yes, this is personal for me. I have to, in full disclosure, I am both a volunteer and a member of the board of the Ivans Outreach Center, which this Saturday, October 28th, is celebrating its 20th anniversary in operation in Morrisville. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Ivans Outreach Center. Ms. Sherlock has also been volunteering on the board with me in the past, but they do a lot of great work for senior citizens in taking them to medical appointments, shopping. Also, they've started a home share program for people looking for, trying to match people who have room in their homes with people looking for homes. They also administer a myriad of education, school educational programs through the 21st Century Grant and in, and many of you also know Darletta Berry Johnson because she's appeared here on occasion because she has volunteered on top of all of her full-time duties, working for Ivans to help Chief McClay and council to prepare Apple... for Ivans, to help Chief McClay and, and council to prepare applications for grants that have been successful, and she's come and helped, helped to explain that because she's the expert grant writer in town. And in recognition of everything she's done for this borough, I thought that, that on the occasion of the anniversary of Ivans, it would be appropriate to single her out personally with this proclamation. And bear with me, I'm going to read the proclamation. It's a little, it's a little lengthy, but well deserved. Whereas Darletta Berry Johnson has served as executive director of the Ivans Outreach Center since it opened in Marsville in 2003, whereas under Darletta Berry Johnson's leadership, Ivans has substantially improved the quality of life for those residing in Marsville and its neighboring communities with opportunities to be healthy, confident, connected, and secure regardless of age, income, or background. Whereas Darletta Berry Johnson initiated and has supervised the Staying Put-in Lower Bucks Program for Ivans, which is conducted by volunteers who provide services to give seniors and adults struggling with serious illness or disability the practical means and social support to live their lives to the fullest safely and confidently in their homes. Whereas Darletta Berry Johnson coordinates and supervises the programs conducted by the 21st Century Grant Community Learning Centers in Marsville, Ben Salem, and Bristol Borough, and Bucks County Technical High School, offering academic, artistic, and cultural enrichment opportunities to students and their families during non-school hours as well as the summer months. Whereas Darletta Berry Johnson has led Ivans into a partnership with the Bucks County Area Agency on, on Aging to launch a share, to go on share, a home share program that offers an affordable housing choice by matching homeowners who want to share their home with home seekers in exchange for rent or help around the home. Whereas Darletta Berry Johnson organized and supervised Ivans' multi-pronged response to the COVID-19 pandemic, which entailed providing hot meals, groceries, wellness checks, and transportation to seniors and disabled individuals most at risk in Marsville and surrounding communities. Whereas under Darletta Berry Johnson's supervision, Ivans continues to provide hot meals weekly to seniors, students, and families in need of food. Whereas Darletta Berry Johnson implemented programs at Ivans to connect individuals in need of assistance with the appropriate existing social service agency. Whereas Darletta Berry Johnson engages in fundraising on an ongoing basis to support the ongoing operation of Ivans, which includes applying for grants and coordinating special events. And whereas in addition to her full-time duties managing Ivans, Darletta Berry Johnson has frequently volunteered to assist the Marsville Police Department, as well as the police departments of several neighboring communities, in preparing successful applications for a wide variety of grants, including community-oriented policing services grants through the U.S. Department of Justice to fund school safety officers and other security programs for schools. Now therefore, in recognition of her tireless commitment to the citizens of Marsville throughout the past 20 years, the Marsville Borough Council declares October 28th, 2023 Darletta Berry Johnson Day. Any questions? No, we already moved that, we set the vote now.
We already did that, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Will you read that at the dinner?
I will.
Thank you.
Unless someone else volunteers to do it in place of me. No, yeah. Oh, and by the way, anyone who wants to go to the dinner, don't worry, we still have a few tickets left. Please contact me or the Ivans House, and we will make sure that you get a ticket, $80, which is a worthwhile contribution to Ivans for attending the, the dinner. So please give it some thought if you have, if you have time available on Saturday to pay your respects to Ivans and the volunteers there, as well as Darletta Berry Johnson. Other business.
But I wanted to let the council know, and Judith especially, that I've been kind of in conversation since I got on council with the RDA about cloverleaf and talking to them and stuff, and I recently reached out to them to clean up the area next to the senior parking lot because it's so overgrown and that, that many of the seniors were concerned for their safety. But, and I talked again, and I got a message from Jeff today. We want to set up a meeting because like they say, this is our property, and we need to decide what we want to do with it. So I'm going to call Jeff and then maybe we can set up a meeting between you and whoever any of the council people want to be involved in talking about this. And like I said, he called me today, so.
So actually, as soon as I received information from Jeff, I spoke with John Leder, and I'll let him talk.
Okay, John.
My guys cleaned that up today.
Oh, over there by the senior? Okay, thank you.
We also should get the county, the county should be coming in and doing some of that, too.
Well, that's why I asked.
Yeah, it's their property, and it's, and if, it's like you, if somebody's trees are growing in your yard, you have a right to go right up and trim up, so they can go, they don't do a lot of maintenance down there.
Right. And I, and I knew it, I'd asked Judith to confirm, I knew it wasn't ours, and it was the, I mean, it technically is.
That's why we cleaned it up today.
Oh, thank you so much. Yeah, the seniors really appreciate that, and so do I. So thank you, good job. So anyway, to talk about cloverleaf and the process of capping it and to move forward. So, you know, I'll talk to him and, and you and whoever would like to be on a meeting. I'm sure there, there's more than just me. Sure, I'm sure Helen, you'd like to be involved, too.
And actually, I'm working with Jeff with creating a meeting with all of council.
Okay. So. You didn't say that to me on, on Saturday.
Sure. You know, we had, we had talked about that, that we, what we really need to do is create a meeting with council. We were trying to figure out how we could do that, because of course, all of our meetings are public as this one. Not that we don't want it to be public, we do, but could we do that maybe at a Parks and Recreation Meeting, since it's advertised? That's what we were trying to come up with.
Yeah, sure. I'm, I'm willing to do that. Because I know right now we're going to have budget meetings and stuff, but I would like us to get started on this so that we can start moving forward, because we don't have that much open space available for building, and it would really be nice if we could start working on that, so thank you.
In the background, that's what I've been doing with, with Jeff, so we'll definitely continue with that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I just want to return to the comment I made earlier. We have a vacancy at mayor right now, or we will as of midnight, and I encourage anyone who is interested in filling that vacancy for the balance of the term, which is the next two years, to please submit a letter of interest to the borough manager. You can do it by email or any other method that, that is effective. And at the next public meeting on November 21st, we will consider those people who have submitted their names, and we, we intend to elect the new mayor. So please, if you're interested, or if you, if you have neighbors who you think might be interested, please tell them about it and encourage them to apply. Anything else?
Yes, please, I'll be very quick.
By the way, before, before we get to that, Nancy, I also have to mention, we have a, we also have a vacancy coming up in the Environmental Advisory Council, a three-year appointment that expires.
That's when the current term expires.
I always do this. Anyway, yeah, the current term expires December 19th, 2023, so we need to find a replacement for that. So if you're interested in joining the Environmental Advisory Council, please also submit a letter of interest to the borough manager, and we'll take that up at the next meeting as well.
Mine was actually just funny, I forgot to mention, I always like to mention what the total payment was of our bills for the month. It was $615,000. But I wanted to mention that $256,000 of that $615,000 was actually for the canal project. So that's reimbursable money.
And if I may, what we would like to do is reinstate having copies of the invoices downstairs as was done in the past. So if anyone is interested in stopping in the borough office and seeing those, I think that that would be a wise idea.
I'd hope to get there today, but didn't make it.
Anything else? October 21st at 10:00 AM is the Fall Nature Walk with naturalist Mary Ann Borja. Victor Borges, anyway, they meet at the Preserve sign located at Delmore and Philadelphia Avenue. Wear sturdy shoes, paths are uneven and can be muddy. October 21st, don't miss it.
10, 10 o'clock? Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Virginia.
Good night, good luck.
Good night.